I call this meeting of the town council to order. It is Monday, September 26, 2022, at just after 7:00 p.m. here in the McKinnon Council Chambers, relative to Mass. General I Chapter 38, Section 20F. And for the benefit of the public, this meeting is being recorded by both video and audio methods. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, roll call.
Counselor Adams, present. Counselor Daniel?
Present.
Counselor Dow?
Excused.
Counselor Lazo?
Present.
Counselor Montigny?
Present.
Counselor Marcati?
Present.
Counselor Rivas?
Excused.
Counselor Ryan?
Present.
Counselor Steves?
Present.
Seven.
We have seven and a quorum. Item number three, consider and accept the town council meeting minutes of Monday, September 12, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any additions, corrections, amendments, deletions? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number four, subcommittee reports. Foray, general government. Counselor Steves?
We have not met and we have nobody scheduled.
Very good. Department of Public Works, Counselor Marcati?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We had a DPW subcommittee meeting on September 30, 2022, in the Veterans Room. Committee members in attendance for myself, Counselor Steves, citizen member Kevin Sclane, and Steve Lazo. Many of the items that are on tonight's agenda, number nine, voted to confirm Town Manager's appointment of Vernon Jackson Jr. as interim DPW director. Agenda item number 10 tonight voted to confirm Town Manager's appointment of Peter Proventure as DPW maintenance man slash equipment operator. And number 11 voted to recommend council ratify contract with Lead Salt to provide treated salt for our streets. We also discussed making changes to the trench regulations and are creating a trench bylaw. And we discussed ongoing road improvement projects in town. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Education and Human Services, Counselor Ryan?
We've had no meetings, so I have no report, and we don't have a meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you very much. Planning and Development, Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow evening at 6:00 p.m. in the Veterans Room. We have had not, we've not had a meeting since our last council meeting. Thank you.
Very good. And last but not least, protection of persons and property, Counselor Lazo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no report at this time, but we have a meeting scheduled for the 29th at 7:00 p.m.
Very good. Thank you all. Item number five, chairman's announcements. I have two announcements for this evening. First, as I'd like to announce, I'm appointing Counselor Marcati to the Capitol, the Capitol Committee. I think it's a, it's a good appointment. He's been involved with the Capitol finances for a while now. It's a, it seems to be a special interest of his. He does a nice job with it. And I've decided to make that appointment. So thank you, Counselor Marcati.
Thank you.
The other announcement I'd like to make is regarding the Autumn Fest. I don't think it's an understatement to say that it was a spectacular day. Tons of people there, good food, good entertainment. A lot of familiar faces and some new ones. Got a chance to talk to a lot of people. Brought my grandkids. Just a great day all the way around. And I'd like to offer my sincere appreciation and thank you to the Southbridge Business Partnership for putting that on. They did a great job. So again, thank you very much. Item number six, Town Managers' announcements.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, residents and audience members. Couple notes for this evening. I just wanted to bring you up to date on hiring. For those of you who aren't aware, we did fill two positions in my office. We hired Joy Wingard, who was our new confidential clerk. She started within the last two weeks. And today Hannah Prescott started as my new executive assistant, allowing Ms. Nora Elgadiri to move over and start her work in HR. In terms of where we are on Town Engineer, last Wednesday, we received responses to our requests for qualifications. We received two packages from two engineering firms, both of which were reviewed by me and Mr. DeJardin on his last day. The two entities met all of our qualifications. And so I will look into getting a negotiated agreement with both of them. There you have some overlapping areas and bring them to the appropriate subcommittee so that we could have engineering services in the interim. As Counselor Lazo alluded, there will be a PPP this week. I have made a recommendation on an inspector of weights and measures, and that will be addressed at the Subcommittee this coming Thursday. Board Health wanted me to let people know that they are having a fall cleanup in advance of Halloween. Normally would be called Beautify Southbridge, but they're going to call it Boofify Southbridge. And costumes are welcome. It's going to be on October 8, from 8:30 to noon. Again, if there's rain, the next date will be the following day, October 9. If you have any questions, you can call the Health Department, 508-764-4252. I'm sure Counselor Ryan will address this in referrals, but I just want to mention, Counselor Ryan and I regularly attend the WRTA Advisory Board meetings, and they voted to extend the zero fare for ridership through the end of the fiscal year. We also did get an email, which I circulated to the council about changing energy costs. I did get a phone call from our local rep a few minutes before the press release came out talking about all energy providers in New England and pretty much across the country will be changing their rates going forward. As of November 1st, we would see a significant increase in our utility costs, especially for electricity, which led me to look at whether or not we were doing municipal aggregation. Municipality can, if it follows certain steps, go out and get a competitive alternative. You do that based on your leverage. You can do it by yourself or try and get some other municipalities. There's a procedure by which you have to do, first the council would have to take a vote, then we would have to work with the Department of Energy, and then we'd have to do a feasibility study and RFP, and then get a qualified supplier. But usually you can get somebody who would compete against National Grid and may save a few cents a kilowatt hour. So I mentioned in the email, try and get some information. I have a meeting tomorrow with one of the consultants that we've used in the past for our natural gas contract. And I'm setting up a meeting with National Grid because they are supposed to help us with this process. So as soon as I get more information, I will ask it to be placed on an agenda or before a Subcommittee so we can get the initial vote. And then we can start the process to bring in, hopefully, an alternative energy provider in here that could provide some relief in terms of slightly lower kilowatt offering. And those are my major announcements for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you very much. Item number seven, presentations. We have a number of presentations this evening. The first one is a presentation from Elizabeth Cruz, President of the Latin American Business Organization. Please.
First of all, can you hear me? I want to thank you for this opportunity. It is with a lot of emotions that I'm here because I grew up in Southbridge. And we were one of the half a dozen families that first came in Southbridge back in the 70s, late 60s. So thank you for having me here. I am the President of the Latin American Business Organization. And I would like to present to you what is LABO and what is the state of entrepreneurship and also how demographics are changing in this nation. So our mission is to increase Latin and minority businesses' economic prosperity and business growth opportunities in the city of Worcester and surrounding towns. We believe advancing the mission that is developing Latin businesses, Latin business owners with the tools to scale their businesses. We believe the empowerment will contribute to Worcester County via jobs. It would build additional leaders and it would create a new generation of companies. LABO members benefits from a great number of business growth opportunities such as business-to-business networking, branding, exposure, educational opportunities. Our vision is to be the go-to Latin business resource advocacy community partner. So we do this right now in Worcester, and we'd like to bring that to Southbridge and other towns. So as you all know, the 2020 census really provided such rich data insights into the diverse Latin community in the United States. It is, it's a growing voting and spending power. We've seen tremendous growth in the change in the Hispanic population. Overall Hispanic population in the United States grew by 23% of a total of 62.1 million. Now, we're going by the census, but we Latinos know that it's more than 62.1. But we'll go with the data. So in the past 10 years, 51.1% of the total U.S. population growth comes from the Latin community, population. Confirm that the country is becoming more diverse. Four in five Hispanics are United States citizen, which a lot of people think the contrary. The Hispanic population would rise to 111 million in 2060, which is, would be one out of three will always will be a Latino. The census also provided information about Southbridge. So there's 36% are Hispanic. When you have a total non-white, I'm sorry, non-Latino of 10,059, which is 57%. Total population in Worcester County was 862,111, of which 111,902 are Hispanics. We've seen tremendous growth in the change in the Hispanic population. The State of Latin Entrepreneurship, this is a study done by Stanford University. And the number of Latino businesses owners have grown 34% over the last 10 years compared to just 1% of all others, making line of businesses the fastest-growing segment of small business ecosystem. As you see in this slide here, the bigger the bubble, the more number of employees these different line of businesses have. So as you can see, the construction, the transportation, warehousing, professional, scientific, and technical services, as well as accommodation and food services, seems to be the one with the highest number of employees. The revenue gap among Latino-owned employee businesses related to white-owned employee businesses is a 1.5 trillion, trillion opportunity gap. And the reason for that is because there's a couple issues with the Latin businesses that need in order for us to close that gap. And one of them is education. And when I'm talking about education, it's not to get an MBA. It's really to learn how to run a business successfully and be sustainable. And also, the second piece is capital. Capital, access to capital has been a challenge for people of color, especially Latinos. And that needs to change in order to be able to give these Latin businesses the opportunity to really strengthen and become a sustainable business owner. The third one is basically reform. And what I mean by reform is that there's a lot of qualifications and requirements for Latinos or people of color that have to go through that somehow they do not qualify. What I mean by that is if there's a government or a local or state job that we have construction companies that want to bid on it, there seems to be a lot of qualifications there that does not allow them to be part of it. Or if they submit a bid, they do not get elected for many reasons. One of them is you look for the lowest budget, the person that offers the lowest amount. And a lot of times, if you will look at statistics, all these companies that always win the bid are the same companies over and over again. And that one company, or many companies that are winning these bids, at one point, they had no experience, they had not the budget they have right now, the funding that they have right now. So one, you know, what happened was somebody closed the door on the people behind them. And one of the other things too is that they always come under budget because they have the funding to do that. But also, if you notice, there always an issue with change orders. And we would need to look carefully at those change orders to determine why did it happen? Was it that we knew there was a structure problem here? And the little guy was being transparent, open, and said, "It's going to cost you 500,000 to do this structure." But the big guy knows the loopholes and said, "This is the amount." Then the change order comes in and say, "You know what? Before we start working on this, we need to fix this structure issue. And by the way, it's going to cost you 500,000." And then you have to go back, revisit the scope and make changes, right? So we need to look at, why is it over budget? Why is there a lot of change orders? Because at the end of the day, this smart guy probably submitted all those things that the big guy did not because he knows the way to, a way to go around it. So I believe with those three things, among other things that we need to work on to close that gap is, again, I want to repeat, education, capital, and reform. So I asked the leaders, if you have the authority to make changes, we should have a discussion about trying to find the pain points and also the ability to make some changes and really provide equal opportunity and, and, to everyone. So moving forward, on this one here gives you basically the number of companies that are the ones, the highest one. Construction is one of them. Finance, insurance, transportation, warehousing, real estate. These are the entrepreneurial businesses that are the most with the largest. State of Latino debt, if you look at this slide, the Latino is the dark blue. The non-Hispanic is white. It's like a light blue. And then the white is the general population. So you can see the Latinos have the highest debt, which is a problem. So I think teaching financial literacy is important, not just for Latino, but everyone. That should be a topic that should be taught in school as part of your curriculum. The GDP, the gross domestic product productivity and success is 2.8 trillion. This was as of 2020, which is Latinos' GDP is 2.8 trillion. If you took the Latino GDP, made it its own separate country, it would be the seventh-largest country, economic country in the world. So if, if we take that away from the United States, you know, it would be very impactful. Population, again, we talked about the growth in Latinos. And believe it or not, Latinos are young. You know, 21% of millennials, 25 Gen Z, and 30 Gen Alpha. Education attainment growth, when you look at this slide, again, you know, the, we're getting more Latinos graduating, which is a good thing. But if you look at the percentage here, you know, we're getting Latinos to really start educating themselves. Moving forward, these are all the accomplishments that LABO has made. And one of the things is that, you know, 2022, I can give you some, some of the accomplishments. We had a venture startup and venture growth program, which we taught it both in English and Spanish. And the majority of the folks elected to take the Spanish one, even though they spoke very well in English. They felt more comfortable speaking, taking that language and taking it in their language and what have you. So we had 50 participants on that class, of which 39 graduated. Three got three college credit from QNCIG. 35 have or starting their own business, and three were female teenagers. One of the teenagers already got certified to do lashes and all kinds of stuff. So that was very, very powerful for us to be able to see teens taking this class where they, they just went in. Actually, they just went in because they had nowhere to go. And it was amazing to see that they got interested, they got really enthusiastic about it, started creating their own businesses, and as a result of that, they graduated. Also, we had another program called Die Semana para hacer tu plan de negocio, and that is 10 weeks to come, to create your business plan. We had seven folks graduated from that. We created a hybrid type of lecture where they could either sign in remotely or they would go in person. The majority ended up doing it remotely. We also did the LABO Expo. So the whole thing of LABO started with creating a Latin business expo, which as a result of that, we found that we needed to do more than just that. So as a result of doing our first expo back in 2015, 16, I'm sorry, we are now doing expo and providing these go-to services to our Latino entrepreneurs. But we had about 70 businesses, Latino businesses there, and it was a success. What we're doing now is we're also working closely with the Brazilian community to, because they are Latinos, but somehow they tend to have their own pocket of clique where they don't really mix with all the other Latinos. But we're trying to encourage, engage them, and make sure that they're part of LABO. And we are working with the Worcester Brazilian Association, which we're going to be creating a lot of programs, not only in Spanish, but in Portuguese as well. We also have educational programs from, you know, good bookkeeping to accounting, starting your business, financing, technology, marketing, branding. Last year, we had a reentry entrepreneurial program for 12 weeks. Out of that, we had 22 participants, nine completing the course and opened their businesses. So again, we're creating businesses, and we need the support from the community, from the government, from federal two and banks to be able to give them grants or lend them money so that they can be sustainable and improve their business. Other things that we did was during COVID, we did a lot of workshop remotely, walking people through PPP and just making sure that everyone was doing okay. As you know, a lot of businesses closed as a result of COVID. So we were there to just try to make sure they did not close. That was one of our big things during COVID. One of the other things we do is we are part of what we call the WIPA, WUSA. And what we do is we burn, we're giving eight games out of the 60-plus games that the Worcester Red Sox has, where we promote the 20 Latin countries. And we sort of have one particular game where we celebrate one or many countries. And we, in that, during the pre-game activities, we have, you know, someone sings the national anthem from that particular country that we're celebrating. We also have dancers. We also have food for that specific country that we sell at the Nacho concession stand. We also have, you know, someone from that country sing the national anthem of USA, as well as "God Bless America" if it's a Sunday game. We also, as LABO, we have a table, because we partner with the WUSA organization, we have a table where we promote the businesses that are members of LABO. So not only do we promote LABO, but we also promote any members that want to be part of the WIPA games. So the last game was this past week, and it was for Central America. We have a lot of partnerships. We have the CWE, the Center for Women Enterprise, SBA, SDCC. I'm not going to go through all of these, but as you can see, we have a lot of partnerships with a lot of other organizations and big corporations and universities and colleges. So for 2023, this is what we planned. We plan to do a 10 weeks, again, Die Semana para hacer tu plan de negocio. We hoping to bring it to Southbridge. We're also going to be doing that in Worcester. The last one we had, we had people from Lawrence as far as severe. The good thing, it was remote. We also going to be doing a venture class startup in February. And that's a different program than the one of 10 weeks. This one is more, gets into more into the social, the mindset changing, you know, try to work out some of the social issues someone may have, which is blocking them from either even taking that first step to be, to start in a business. So this one's a little bit more social, but it's around the same topic that teaches you how to, you know, come down, if you have many ideas, come down to one idea. It teaches you about branding, marketing, social media, you know, good bookkeeping practices, making sure you file your taxes, what have you. So that is also part of it. Also, April 29th, on 2023, we'll be doing our annual Latin American Business Expo at the DCU. We had 75 last year. We're hoping to bring more. And we're hoping to bring some of the businesses from Southbridge there. What I can say from this year is people that came in for the first time, they really didn't even need a crowd foot traffic because they exchanged business cards, and they were like, "I can't believe there's 70-something businesses that I can go to." One of the things we're trying to push is for big corporations like Fallon, EMC, you know, to utilize Latin businesses. Because at the end of the day, they call for catering, they, they do printing materials and what have you. So again, this is something that once you become a LABO member, we would push and advocate for your businesses to grow and to be sustainable. We also have others here, first-time home buyers. A lot of people want to know about that. I'm also a Realtor. I'm also a commercial real estate agent. And also how to leverage your equity to start your business, buy or lease. And also minority, this is a critical one, which the state asks us to be part of. And it is to do a minority business enterprise certification class. So we have someone that did work for the state before that knows how the process works. She's going to be teaching that class so that we can have, you know, people get certified, not only at the, at the state level, but also at the federal level. And we do a lot of programs on grants, especially with ALPA funds. We have one in Worcester last week. We have another one next week for the Portuguese community, Brazilian. And then we also have another one tomorrow from MGCC grants. So we, you know, some of these are remote. So even if we do it in Worcester, people from Southbridge are all over the place could join these meetings or workshops. One of the other things about why LABO, LABO, and I don't want to go through all of this, but LABO is we understand the culture, we can speak to them. We can certainly work with them to try to understand the process. A lot of Latinos, they're very nauseous and, 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 you know, that's their being. They can trust you with everything, but once you start talking about money, they put a wall immediately. And, and, you know, you can't just say, "You have to give it to me because that's the process." It won't work. So we know how to talk to them to make sure that they open up to us and let us help them with anything that they could, that we need in order to help them with financing, with business, or what have you. So, so again, what we're trying to do is close, again, you know, to summarize, close that gap, make sure that we can work with the federal, the state, and businesses to help with the education, the capital access, and reform. These are the board of directors that we have currently in place. I don't know if I have to go through this, but we have all these folks that are here. We have people that are already teaching financial literacy, people that offer how to start a business. We have an attorney here that teaches the business entity that some new people, entrepreneurs, need to know about, whether they should open LLC or do, you know, do business as, or what have you. I think the next steps would be to get support from the town officials. I know we did get a lot of support from the town manager for one of the grants, so we appreciate that and thank you. And I think to engage with the Latin businesses in Southbridge and become the go-to resource for Latin businesses in Southbridge and set up a date for the startup business training, hopefully the third week, and this is with CWE. Even though it is Center for Women and Enterprise, we also encourage men to apply for these programs. And then also outreach strategy. It is very important to have that in place in order to make sure that we reach out to the 36% of Latinos in Southbridge. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to say thank you, first of all, for coming here, Ms. Cruz. You and your organization do some really crucial work in this region. I'm really happy to see that you guys are getting more involved. I want to thank Counselor Rivas for working to get you and Ms. Dean introduced and working together on some really issues of import for the people of Southbridge. Not only did you talk about education and providing business opportunities, you also talked about working through and getting rid of those regulatory burdens that are a barrier to a lot of minority-owned business owners. Whether rightfully or purposefully put there, they are a hindrance. And it's really important that we're talking about for the next generation of business leaders, what ways we can reform the code to make it easier and more accessible to them so that way we can create more economic success. So thank you. Thank you to Counselor Rivas, and thank you to Ms. Dean. I appreciate all the work you guys are doing for the Latinx community here in Southbridge.
Thank you.
Counselor Marcati?
That's it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I just have to say one thing. You really hit the nail on the head when you talked about change orders because that drives me up a wall. We, we get a bid, it's low bid, with all the change orders, it ends up being a large bid. So you got that one right. I don't- I don't know how we changed that, but that's something that really needs to be looked at. I do know recently we voted, and Counselor Adams can talk to this, we voted to put some ARPA money into low, small business loans. So you might want to, and maybe you already know about that with, with Ms. Dean. So that's something that we set up here in Southbridge for small business owners to take a look at. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to introduce Jerry Maldonado, who is the director of the QCC here in Southbridge, also a veteran himself. Welcome him aboard to say his, I believe it's the fall semester's highlights for this coming year.
Thank you, Counselor Adams. There we go. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jerry Maldonado. As Counselor Adams mentioned, I am the director of Quinsegaman in Southbridge. Not only do I work here in Southbridge, I'm also a resident of the town of Southbridge. My commute is about seven minutes, eight minutes with, with traffic, so that, that works out really well. I am also a graduate of Quinsegaman Community College and before, a long, long time ago. My daughter is also from Southbridge, and she graduated from Quinsegaman at Southbridge back in 2014. She continued on to Nichols College, which is local, got her bachelor's and master's in accounting, continued on to Penn State Dickinson Law. She's now a prosecutor for, for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So here in Southbridge, we have a prosecutor as well as myself. So Quinsegaman at Southbridge, we were on Optical Drive for many years, probably about twenty years or so. We, during COVID, we moved to inside the new high school. I know that there was a lot of people who still go to Optical Drive, and they seem to be a little disappointed that we left the town. We never left the town. We're still in town. We're now located inside the high school. And some of the advantage of that is the fact that we can offer early college classes to the high school students. Right now, we're offering three different classes to high school students, completely free of charge to the students, including the books. And these classes are not college equivalent, they are college classes taught by college professors. This semester, we currently are offering psychology and two rounds of first-year experience. That's what we're offering the high school students right now. So some of the classes, one of the reasons why I was asked to come here is we have some classes that we're offering starting in October, and these are free of charge. You don't have to be a Southbridge resident, but obviously we're here in Southbridge, so it makes it very convenient. So we're offering medical administrative assistant class, veterinary assistant, Microsoft Office 365, and a PCA class in Spanish. We, so that's something that's, that's new to us, trying to offer some classes in Spanish, knowing that our Latino population is quite large in Southbridge. This, these are done through grant, and these are meant for people who are looking to go into the workforce shortly after graduating, and there is a certification test with some of these classes after the classes are over. At beginning of October, we actually have the medical administrative certification test that's going to be held on campus. The vet assistant class, that will be over tomorrow, the one that, that was running over the summer, but we will have another one in October. So all these classes, they're ending now, because we started them in the summer, and we're going to have a new run in October. There's going to be a link that I'll show you in a little bit, and that will tell you how to, how to get in touch. In fact, if you are interested, you can email me, which I'll give you my email at the end. You can email me, or you can go ahead and go to info dot QCC dot edu slash fast dash track, and that will get you the information. And the only thing we're asking you here is, we're asking you to put in your name, telephone number, and email, and then someone will get back to you after you do that and will give you further information. And what happened, the process is, it takes a couple of days. The process is, once you put in your information, somebody will reach out to you, and they'll schedule for a Zoom meeting where they will give you more information about the different classes. Almost everybody qualifies, but I'm not going to say everybody does, because there are certain requirements. You do have to be over eighteen, and like I said, it is meant for individuals who are going to go into the workforce in these, in these fields. I know that I get a lot of high school students who want to be part of the veterinary assistant class, because you get to play with cats and dogs. It's a great class, and I wish that I could offer it to them. Unfortunately, at this time, that's something that we can do. But I had a young lady, the mom of a young lady today was fourteen years old, who was very interested. I can definitely see why she'd be interested, but this is not quite what, what these classes are meant for, maybe in the future, but for now, that's not what it's meant for. Besides non-credit classes, we are a college, we are on campus, and we offer plenty of four-credit classes. The young lady that you see, she is also a resident of Southbridge, she is a teacher at, at, at Southbridge High School, and she also works for Quinsegaman Community College, and she's also a student of Quinsegaman Community College. So a very busy, very, very busy person. So we're looking to complete, you can complete up to your first, first thirty-four credits here in town instead of going to Worcester. You can always complete an entire degree between online, remote, and Southbridge classes. There are some classes, there are quite a few classes that you can take between those three modalities. For some more sciency, the more science classes, that you will have to go to Worcester, because we don't, we just don't have the equipment in Southbridge. But we're trying to do the best we can. You can do your general college prereqs are in Southbridge, your psychology, your sociology, your English, your math, your history. So we offer quite a few classes. We probably offer five or six different biology classes as well in Southbridge. And then we have, we're set up to do medical pathways, so anybody that's looking to go into the medical field, you can start in Southbridge and do quite a few of your classes before you move on to do your other classes. This is my contact information. I don't know if this goes out on record, but that's my contact information. I do ask that you click on the link that I mentioned before for these free classes, but if you have any questions whatsoever, I am more than happy to help you out. You can call me at seven seven four three six six four seven six six, or my email is there, it's my first initial last name, G. Maldonado, at QCC dot M A S S dot edu, and more than happy to answer your questions. As you can imagine, the Southbridge Police Department was nice enough to put up my information on their link about two Mondays ago, excuse me, one Monday ago, and I think it was Sergeant Dinghy who helped me out there, and my phone has been nonstop since he put it up on the police thing. Lots of people emails, lots of, lots of phone calls, lots of people are interested in town about these programs. I know that some people thought that it was only for Southbridge residents, it's not, it's for, it's for the area. I also heard that we had canceled classes. They're not, just, I'm here to assure you that these classes are, right now are still scheduled to go on. But as you can imagine, a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, and we're trying to get back to people as soon as we can, but we only, you know, there's only so many of us, and I, I'm inundated with the amount, amount of people that are asking questions, which is fantastic. You know, that's what we want. We want people to, to take advantage of these classes. And that's the end of my short presentation. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Counselor Adams?
Not a really question, but just thank you for coming up here. You're part of the Southbridge Business Partnership, and you've been really active in, in that program as well. So to get to know who you are and have great conversations like we did tonight and even at Southbridge Business Partnership, we really appreciate you reaching out to our community and continuing to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say that I was really pleased to see that you wanted to come up and give us a quick presentation on what you're offering this year. My background is in education, and I can't say enough to the public at large that you can get a very high-level, very good-quality education at QuinSig. A lot of people think, well, it's QuinSig, and it's in town, and, you know, I always say that two plus two is four, whether you're at Harvard or whether you're at Quinsegaman. And if you can get the information that you need presented in a high-quality manner by high-quality professional staff at the economical levels that are being offered at QuinSig, you can't go wrong. It's a wonderful resource that the town has, and I can't say enough that it's, that it's overlooked by people, and it shouldn't be. You really need to think of one of your first choices as being QuinSig. As you stated a little earlier, it's a great stepping stone to bigger and better things as well, and that shouldn't be overlooked as well. So my sincere thanks to you for making this presentation this evening. I think it's well worthwhile that we take a few minutes to discover just what is happening up on Tory Road. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, everyone.
Very good. Our third presentation this evening is the monthly progress report from Capital Associates, Matt Karen.
Thank you, everybody. It's good to be in front of you today. Unlike the previous two speakers, my technology skills are waning, so I've written it down. And PEG is under the weather, so there is no, there will be no presentation on the screen. You'll have to just listen, and you don't have to look at me, but just listen. I thank you. Before I start, I just want to, when I, when I walked in a few months ago, I, I was greeted at my desk with a, with a card, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say publicly, thank you to Jim Farren for welcoming me into this new role. So I wanted to say that publicly, thanks. It's been a busy month, and I would just, I think, I'm pleased to tell you that the personnel in the office is really starting to mesh together, meld well. There is a synergy that is now starting to form and gel. I know that's kind of like fluff talk, but there, it is clear that there are skill sets that each one of us possess that does not overlap and get in the way of somebody else, which is wonderful, and we're really starting to take, get our stride. It's some, quickly, I'll say it before any comments, is that, yeah, they have skill sets and I don't, so that way I don't get in the way of them, but that's, that's not entirely true. I think what we have found recently is the incredible work ethic that both my colleagues have and the skill sets that they possess, what is absent sometimes, but not any longer, is the historical knowledge of where the town has been and where it was trying to go with certain other initiatives that were, you know, historically placed. And when we are talking with now, we're having wonderful conversations, frequent and high-level conversations with both stakeholders, property holders in the downtown area and the town itself, and with investors who are looking at potentials and opportunities here, the conversation is full. The town manager has been wonderful in participating in some of those. As far as the, the measurable areas, you know, number one is the number of occupied storefronts. We're in the process of reinventing and reidentifying what the urban renewal area is, but I am pleased to tell you that without any, there aren't any new vacancies, but there is one new occupancy that will be taking place October first, and it's actually instrument lessons, music lessons, and it's in a, it's in an odd little, it was, it was a, it was a kind of a quirky ask. It's a kind of one of those puzzle pieces that you don't know where it's going to fit, and we found the perfect spot. It's actually in a storefront that just recently was vacated, probably about seven or eight months ago, but it faces the Central Street parking lot, and it's got weird, weird lines and weird designs, and it needed to be in a spot where both, they were insulated from sound, and that sound wouldn't, wouldn't be a nuisance to any of the other occupants. And we found that at twenty-two, I believe it's twenty-two Hamilton Street on the backside, and we did a whole sound check, and so that's wonderful. So we see there, it sounded like a flood or a line of people, but it's good, healthy after-school activity and weekend instruction that's going to go on, along with some adult and some bands who do some recording and, and, both in their practice play and, and some of their experimentation, but that is also happening. There are a couple of prospective, well, there's a lot of prospective, new occupants, but they're a little too early to, I don't want to raise anybody's expectations, but there is a lot of negotiation going on right now, and then it's, some of it is fabrication, interior fabrication. There is restaurateurs, and actually a couple of restaurateurs, but when those negotiations come a little bit closer to being able to, if signed, and us being able to look forward to them, I'll, I'll announce that. But that should be coming up, and of course, I think we all are, this really has nothing to do with me, because that, these efforts were started prior to my coming onboard, but I think we're all in high anticipation of Central Pizza reopening with the investment that they put in. And I say that in that it's just a, one, congratulations to them and to us as being hosts for them, but it, that kind of investment and that kind of activity obviously spurs on other, and so that is welcomed. There's social services and the faith community. We convened a meeting earlier this month of the faith committee, community, excuse me, to inform them and make sure that they were on board and in a full understanding of what the goals of the town were, especially in the downtown core. They were wonderfully receptive and understood where the parallels were in our mutual efforts, and that it's about vibrancy and, and contribution and reaching out and touching human beings either with their goods and their services in a wonderful and fruitful way, and they were very understanding and actually, and part of the solution, even though we recognize them in our, in our efforts to try to get commerce more in the storefronts, they understood what's going on. Out of that, those conversations, there's actually, one of the faith organizations has been asked, has asked me to look for a, actually a larger space and outside of the core, and we're engaged in that conversation, in that effort right now. It looks like there's a healthy interest of maybe hosting them in another, in another location. As they exit, there's actually somebody in this particular spot that is looking to potentially locate their business there, so those, those are good signs that we've got this type of activity and this energy is, is ongoing back and forth. We also, as a, as a committee and as an office, in our effort, along with the town manager and PEG, we participated in the, in the construction and investment roundtable hosted by the Chamber of Commerce in Worcester. Along with us accompanied a couple of stakeholders in town, and there was a wonderful introduction to, to, to be brought to them, and as it so happened, they actually abut each other, these two particular property owners, and we were able to subsequently bring them together for a, for further discussions on what they might be able to bring to each other as they abut. But on top of that, one of the other ones, and I'm sorry I'm talking so vague, but I think it's improper if I point them out publicly, we want these conversations to be going and free-flowing. They just know that the effort's there, and, and our reputation as a town is showing that we're actually accommodating them. But they have also, he had also solicited the, the attention and, and the interest of a, of a number of investors, and by our participation and our further understanding of what we have, as we, the town, you guys, had put together and assembled the opportunity zone where these investments and where these investors and these developers can actually apply both their assets and their, well, I guess it's all assets, because it'll, it'll be buildings on one side, money on the other. But that is, we are, we're starting to grab some traction there, and, and that encompasses our downtown core, goes up to the airport, which is outside of my purview, but a lot of that feeds into our, our central commerce area. We, I took part in, participated a little bit, and I want to thank the town manager for his letter of support. There's an agency that is looking to solicit a program through the Community Empowerment and Reinvestment Grant. I took active participation in that, in that this particular program would have a retail component to it and would occupy one of our storefronts in the, in the downtown area, along with, and still within the, in the urban renewal area, a workshop. If that grant is successful, it would, the six-month program would start in January and go to June. Again, if that funding comes through, there is high expectation, both from the property owner who is going to host them and the organization who's going to provide the program, that it'll be sustaining and, and be able to perpetuate itself after the six months, which I think is, is wonderful. It's skill development for a, for at-risk population and people reentering into the, into society. I've also been asked to, because it, the office is, well, PEG volunteered me, so I did. So that we would take, we are doing the Slum Blight survey in-house at a substantial savings to the town. We feel we can do it, and it's been fruitful. Outside of both the savings, it's also great to have a firsthand look at these properties as we go through certain sections of town, certain streets, and find out the, the condition of these properties, where they are, where we can obviously improve, and where we might be able to find some, some greater value. I am currently working on an agenda to host realtors and brokers on a presentation of where this town is, both from economic where this town is, both from an economic standpoint, from a market standpoint, but also because it's hard to see, because it's, well, actually, it's impossible to see, is the financial commitment that the town, the state, has put into the reconfiguration of the public areas, the artery areas of Hamilton Street and the rail trail. Those things are, I mean, those are big investments. They are going to make a substantial impact on the walkability of our downtown. And without it being seen, without it, there's nothing visually in front of anybody, it's been my job to bring that to light and articulate those investments, encouraging, if not almost heavily suggesting that you would be negligent if you didn't participate in the upgrade of your properties to also match and complement what the public investment has been. A like meeting also is being, it'll be a similar agenda, but I think we take, it's my suggestion to take the two groups separately, but then to invite every stakeholder that is within our urban renewal area, especially the commercial buildings, and have that similar presentation. It's been eye-opening to me to, even longstanding stakeholders in the downtown, to not exactly know what is going on in the future here with our public investment. And that's not to say anybody is ignorant, it's just that busy lives and obligations to their tenants and to their buildings. And then I would say, and it did come up in the last presentation, I think Mr. Marquetti, Councilor Marquetti had brought it up, there is a handful of inquiries that I have fielded who are interested in the use of the ARPA monies that you have been good enough to entrust in our office. And it is our charge to get the parameters kind of in line in the not-too-distant future so that we can get those monies out to work. I think the sooner the better. There is distinct, there is real interest in, the sooner we can get that money working for us and starting to contribute and be returned to the fund, the more we can extend that out and get other buildings and other storefronts occupied. That's, for the most part, has been mine. There are two or three meetings scheduled with stakeholders. I wanted to thank Quincy Goodman Community College for hosting us for a lunch earlier in the month, but out of those conversations was indicated a little bit, Quincy Goodman Community College, is it here any longer? Did come up. They are here, of course, I know they're here, you know they're here, others don't, because they don't have a downtown or a presence any longer. So there is interest, and they are willing to come to the table and talk about it. This is not without, I don't want to raise expectations, but they are talking about their exposure so that they can contract the foot traffic and the population that could make great use of their services. And that's adult basic education. Sometimes a school setting isn't where that needs to be, it needs to be in a more commercial adult setting, so we're happy about that. I think that's good for, I think that's what I have right now. There's a couple of other things, but I'm old, and I'm sure it'll come, as questions may come. But I've been asked to keep it short. I failed again. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Just wanted to add on to what Mr. Karen said. We've had some great meetings and some great conversations that have developed from our attendance at things like the Worcester Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Dean had actually put together quite an impressive list of things that have happened in the last two years, when, you know, you add them all up from the rail trail to some of the developments, the TIP project, the Wells School, what's going on with our overlay, what we've been doing with the ARPA money. And one thing that I neglected to mention in my announcements was, last week, the governor signed into law the legislation giving us seven new liquor licenses in the Globe Village, Central Core, and over by the AO. And these individuals are very impressed when they're coming into town, looking at what the investment that the town has made. They love the character of the downtown, they like what they see, and they said to us the other day that the addition, the opportunity to bring restaurants in with those licenses is huge, and it's generating a lot of conversation, and, you know, it's continuing to build. People are telling people, and this is how we're getting these referrals, second and third hand from these investors, so it's very promising. And so it's been good working, as Mr. Karen said, there's great synergy with the team we have here and the connections we've been making, so I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Ma'am. Councilor Ryan, then Councilor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you first. I just want to thank Mr. Karen and his group and the town manager for their work on this. We're seeing a record amount of economic development here in town. We're seeing record amount of investments from this community into infrastructure and into economic development, particularly helping trust some of those ARPA funds to the redevelopment authority. I think you talking about and championing the fact that this town is ready to make those investments and help support small and local businesses to help redevelop these, especially the center of core of town, is great, and we're seeing the fruition of those years of investment and talk pay off. And now, with you at the helm, I'm looking forward to continuing to see payoffs for the community of Southridge. So I thank you, and I thank the economic development team for all the work they've been doing on this. This has been wonderful.
Thank you. Councilor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. It does sound like a puzzle that has to be worked out here, exactly what's going on. You're talking to businesses, you've brought in one businesses, it sounds like a church. I'm looking for more concrete evidence that businesses are coming here, and I realize that sometimes you can't name names, but I just hope that we can get something more definite coming into the downtown area. Now, you say that it's an economic development zone, so what exactly does that mean?
Opportunities zones.
All right, do they get tax breaks for coming here?
It's monetizing tax credits, for the most part, in that, and we're, I am not, I am not the expert, Councilor, just to let you know. But there are investment firms and money firms who developers go to, to actually take use and actually accomplish that. What it does is it takes development that arguably does not make financial sense just on its surface, but we, because we're in the opportunity zone, and then investors have hedged some of their capital gains and some of their sales into these funds to invest in opportunity zones, they can hedge against taxation, which is fine. I mean, it's a tool, but what it does, and with every tax, usually with tax breaks, is usually to motivate people to do other things with their money. And that's exactly what we have done some years ago with establishing the opportunity zones. What we haven't done is actually make use of that. Our participation in, at the Worcester Chamber, who are a number of, they have a number of case studies that we are able now to kind of look over, and we can guide some of our stakeholders into. Some of our properties, quite frankly, they lend themselves well, but the current owners may not be eligible for it because they've just sat too long. It may have to transfer hands, but now we've got a greater understanding of what has to happen so that we can take advantage of the properties that lie within this opportunity zone, and it's my job to make sure that, hey, listen, this is the kind of development that will be attractive both to our current market, that being residents that are here, both as a market, but then also as a support staff, and then what will attract us as we look to further the visitation into some of the other, our surrounding towns, disturbance for the most part. But I would, to my friends' counter about Charlton getting everything, there are certain things that are going into Charlton, but I do believe that a good portion of their work staff will be supplied by the good residents and the skill sets here in Southridge. As they come back, they should come home to both contribute and enjoy, and that is going to happen here, and we'll let them take the big warehouse on the hill. We'll take the spending on Main Street.
And as far as businesses that are already in the central core, you are reaching out to them, talking to them, what they need to stay?
I am, and there's, thank you, Councilor, and yes, because it's important. One of them that I, one of the businesses that I thought we might be at risk of losing is not going to be lost, at least in the near future, which I'm happy to hear, that's great. There is one that we're not going to be able to keep, and it's just a change in the industry. I don't think he'd mind if I bring it up, it's just, I take it because it's so ironic, here we are, the eye of the Commonwealth, and we're about to lose an attrition on Main Street. But that industry has changed so much, and in conversations with Jim at length, and he's an old friend, and actually, we used to throw stuff at each other across Main Street because my McDonald's pizza was across the street, and his daughter and my daughter were friends, so he's just, it's just changed. It's just changed. He's at an age, and, you know, to chase it at this level, within that nuance of having an in-town attrition, he just doesn't have it any longer. Would it be nice to attract another one? Yeah. Quite frankly, that's not the low-lying fruit, at least so far for me, and at your direction of looking for, you know, event and restaurant opportunities, so I haven't. But if one shows itself, wonderful. And there may be attraction for a space, but that may become from one of the abutters for a different use, but that has yet to be seen.
And then finally, the business, the entities that are downtown, you don't have to name names, but what does make up the most of the renters downtown? Are they businesses? Are they residents? What exactly is predominant down there?
Well, we have service. We have service. You know, no disparaging to anybody who's occupying space there, but we have service. And outside of the sparse retail, it's the faith community and, you know, service and rental, H&R Block, you know, those offices. And again, not, without disparaging, they provide service, a needed service. Does it necessarily, is that the highest and best use for the spot and the window space presentation that they take up? I argue no. I think you concur, but we'll have to start surrounding and change that energy. And like I said, there are, there are heavy negotiations going on right now, kind of play mediator, which I think is the role you've asked me to play, to both attract and put them in partnership, or at least in conversation, with property owners who would entertain them occupying their space. I would, and again, just I'll put our office on the, you know, kind of on the high expectation side of getting something accomplished with at least our terms of that lending, because it is only certain, there's only certain buildings that are up the code to, you know, to host a restaurant. And so it's not easy, but I'm saying it's logical to introduce people who have buildings with that kind of infrastructure. And those conversations are ongoing and frequent, and they've been wonderful. And there are some, again, without naming names, but there are some property owners who have that kind of infrastructure, who may wish to talk to some of their tenants and reshuffle things a little bit, so it might be a little bit more to our liking and into theirs, of course. It will work. It will work. I ask you for your patience.
Oh, yeah. You have your work going on.
But I also want you to keep your expectations high.
All right. Thank you.
Councilor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. To Mr. Karen, thank you again for the update and the brief. The one thing I was going to bring up tonight was the ARPA, see how that was going. I do, you know, with an understanding that, you know, it's helped the small businesses within town. Also, you know, we talked about the zero-interest loans or stuff like that, but at the same time, you know, there's some businesses out there that would probably need some help with a grant of some sort, and that's why, that was one of the things. So I'm looking forward to seeing kind of what that looks like. I think every situation is different, and I know you guys will make the best decision. I do know it's going to take some time, because this is just one of those things that has to be built up from the ground up. And I'm glad you brought up the opportunity zones. So back in July of 2018 to 2000, right before 2019, I think President Obama is the one who came out with the opportunity zones, and we had two of them. I think Worcester itself, or the state of Mass, had 17. We actually had two of them here, one at the Globe, one at the AO area, not, but within this, I think it was maybe downtown area or something like that.
It's, there's two zones. It's downtown core, and it's actually, it ignores the AO in that area, but it heads down half of Mechanic Street and then all the way up, and then up to the airport.
So we had, we had two of them that were here. I know that can be spread out, whatever. I'm looking forward to actually seeing this part taken, because when I brought this up before, back in 2018, 2019, there wasn't a lot of information flow going, and I don't think it was going to go anywhere fast, so I'm glad to see that you and Ms. Dean are actually taking a look, a hard look at it, Mr. Rumsey, hard look at those opportunity zones that we have here in town.
No, thank you, Councilor. It's an important piece, and arguably, just to date, one of the most underutilized tools that we have, but again, it takes manpower to engage, and I'm happy to do it. And like I said, the team is great, and our investors are actually savvy to it.
And lastly, I just want to bring up today, I was going to wait until the council's forum, but since we're talking about economic development a little bit right here, I get to sit on a meeting with Amazon today with Ms. Dean, Mr. Rumsey, and the town manager who set this whole thing up. It was great to hear, talked about the airport, talked about the liquor licenses, talked about all kinds of stuff within our town itself. The representative from Amazon was pretty impressed by all the work that's happening, from the infrastructure work to everything else that's happening. One thing that stuck out at me, though, was he said we were the first town, besides Charlton, to actually reach out and talk to them about what we can do for them and what they can do for us. So I look forward to having further conversations. I want to thank the town manager and the economic team for setting all that up. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Councilor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your presentation there, Mark. I had a quick question. At one point, you mentioned the, obviously, the balance of our restaurants and our interest in getting those kinds of, those kinds of entities. What I was wondering is, how do we balance those kinds of traffic-based businesses with the need for services for local residents? And I don't mean in terms of, like, community services, I mean in terms of trying to rebuild some of the base of everyday living services that the town used to have, because I think we will be needing those as time goes forward.
Absolutely, and this isn't, there are, if I say this correctly, there are enough windows who need to be filled before we look at replacing the views in some of the others. I think attrition will start to, there'll be a natural flow, and there'll be placement, and there will be, it doesn't necessarily have to be on its, you know, on our runway, so to speak. I mean, those services can be readily available and within the downtown, and within the downtown, but it doesn't necessarily have to take top spot. We'll find those support services and spaces for them. I mean, again, they're not, it's not like we're, nobody is knocking on the door and saying, hey, you know, look for another spot. My job, our job, is to make the spots that lend themselves to fill themselves right, and then let the market start to take, start to force itself on the rest. It'd be more of a natural attrition. We're not pushing any needed service out, whether it be faith and/or human services.
That's not what I'm asking.
I'm sorry.
The opposite. What I was asking about, I was thinking more in terms of, like, the everyday services that, our town used to have a whole slew of things, like, for example, shoes and people that fix things and those kinds of things, and some of them certainly still exist, but how do we get them so that they, that they, what's the word I want, complement the services, the kinds of more retail and traffic-based businesses that we're trying to bring in?
Thank you.
So that they actually serve the people of the community.
Yes. There is a, again, I hesitate to say some of these things too early, but there has been great interest, and there is a growing groundswell of conversation around agriculture and feeding a downtown market so that citizens can actually take advantage of their, the fruits of their labor, whether it be herders or growers. There is a, there is a growing interest, and it's not insignificant. We don't talk about it, and then Southridge isn't necessarily associated with it because of our dense population center, that's where all the attention gets, but we have a wonderful resource available to us, and we will, there's an opportunity, if it's taken, by which that kind of commerce will happen, potentially, again, if all sides come together and all financial needs are met. I've got some ongoing, I've got three pending meetings. USDA is one of them, representatives from USDA, and then Massachusetts Department of Agriculture, too. Those are very hot topics right now. If it shows its face in the support that comes in with what happens downtown, I think you'll see that happen as almost a course of natural action.
Okay. Thanks. Anything else? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for your time, everybody.
We'll move on to agenda item number eight, citizens' forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the council on any item not on the agenda this evening?
Thanks for your time, everybody.
We'll move on to agenda item number eight, Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the Council on any item not on the agenda this evening? Please.
Donald Solinsky, Henry Street. After my last, after my talk last meeting, a gentleman, I think his name was John Polowski, brought up some legitimate points that go to my question of under what authority can the town mandate to a resident who can and cannot interact with their dog, then go so far as to put it on the dog license, making the license void if I am ever seen with the dog? This question was never answered after the meeting. I asked it multiple times and I emailed Mr. McCall multiple times. And even Counselor Daniels said, your question was answered. It was not answered. Mr. Polowski said he didn't see me at the meeting. If I was there, maybe the town would have listened to me. This goes to my question of authority. I was never notified of a meeting or a hearing, nor was there ever any public notice of it. So I don't know how this man heard about it. In any event, Mr. McCall, was this a meeting or was it a hearing? And under what authority can the town mandate to a dog-owning residence who can interact with their dog? No answer. Mr. McCall, you state you did this because it appeared to be a game being played. For one month, while the dog was subjected to stressful kennel, the town, the police, the ACO refused to look at any evidence that I, Mr. Christian, or his mother tried to present to you and to the town on numerous occasions to rectify and get Rocco home. So who is playing games here? Finally, after Mr. Christian sent multiple emails fearing for the safety of his dog, Mr. Polowski stated, this meeting or hearing was held and only then, one month after seizing the dog, finally, a more thorough investigation of all evidence was allowed showing the dog was in fact Mr. Christian's. Yet, as a condition for the return of the dog, the town issued Rocco's license with a stipulated note on the license. Quote, and this is from your email, Mr. McCall, "The dog's license shall be issued under the condition, Rocco will not have any contact with Donald Solinsky. If a violation of this occurs, the dog license shall be void." End quote. Under what authority the town have a right to do that? Not why. I have heard the whys and I have addressed them. I'm asking, what authority does the town have to do that? What statute? What law? I love taking care of dogs. It gives me purpose in life and I want to contribute to my community and to encourage construction of a dog park, to exercise and socialize our dogs and citizens. Rocco is now in an apartment alone for at least 10 hours a day with little socialization or exercise. With me, he was out daily, socializing, playing, training, exercising. This life he is forced into is not in the best interest of the dog, as Mr. McCall stated. I am offering the citizens of Southbridge free dog walking services, including vet, vet visits for all Southbridge dogs. I do this because I miss my dog of 11 years every day. I ask the Town Manager and all Counselors to allow and show me support by raising your hands. Who supports Nobody, huh? It's unanimous. I get no support in me walking dogs or caring for dogs, even though the statute, which is being amended by the way, says I cannot own a dog, but I can walk, I can care for, I can foster a dog, and I can dog-sit a dog. You are interfering with my basic constitutional right of enjoyment. You are violating my constitutional right to interact with other people and their dogs. I live in fear you will continue to target me and dog owners fear the same thing and hesitate to give me their dogs to walk and care for. And you are interfering, which I said before, my basic constitutional right of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness.
Cowards.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to approach the podium this evening to speak on an issue not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number nine. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Vernon Jackson as interim DPW Director.
So moved.
Second. Counsel Mike Hedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This was approved at the DPW Subcommittee by a four to zero vote.
Very good. Any discussion?
Is Mr. Vernon here tonight or?
I had extended an invite. Well, he had actually asked me before. I said it would be up to him when I first spoke to him. And I didn't get back to him and tell him he definitely had to be here. I left it if he could make it. We had had a couple other interim appointments where we didn't have the individual here. But as I indicated at Subcommittee, you have his resume. He came recommended to me. I, he did meet with staff. I did interview him on the telephone. He is retired. He does do some consulting services. And initially he'll have at least one to one and a half days a week that he could stop in. What he said he would intend to do is be here on Fridays and then come in afternoons during the week to help sign off on things and give direction to some of the projects while we're interviewing candidates. And we do, we will be interviewing some candidates this coming week for the DPW Director position.
Very good. Anything else? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 10. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Peter Proventure as DPW Maintenance Man, Equipment Operator, for an indefinite term effective immediately pending successful completion of state ethics.
So moved.
Second. Counsel Mike Hedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This was also approved by a vote of four to zero.
Very good. Any discussion?
Well, I would just like to thank the Town Manager for providing the CDO. I know that we were, there was some questions about the license and I appreciate it, you bringing it forward. Thank you. Is Mr. Proventure here tonight?
He is here. He is in the audience this evening.
I mean, if he wants to come up and say something or?
Would you like to approach the podium and speak or? It's your choice.
You don't have to.
You don't have to.
I'd like to hear your speech.
Yeah.
Mr. Proventure, would you like to come up and introduce yourself?
No pressure or nothing, you know.
Thank you very much. Peter Proventure, I've been in town for 24 years. Love the town. I'm looking forward to the opportunity. I will say I'm a person that likes to excel. So I'm looking forward to this opportunity, as I said in my interview. I'm a go-getter. I always like to better myself. I want to take the opportunity to better my community, myself, my department, all you guys. Looking forward to it. I appreciate the opportunity very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a much better speech than the previous speak on the agenda. Thank you.
Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Congratulations, Item number 11. Vote to approve a contract amendment with tie-in bond to add full-time construction observation services to the West Street Improvements Project. Prudential fee not to exceed $103,000 to be funded from Chapter 90 and allow the Town Manager to sign all related documents.
So moved. Second.
Very good. Counsel Mike Hedy, I believe you're a committee addressed this earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This came to our Subcommittee twice and we voted it down twice. And the reason we voted it down is because we wanted to hire a full-time clerk of the works or assistant to the town engineer. There is some, there was some concern from some of the committee members concerning tie-in bonds performance on South Street. We did vote to authorize a change back in February to give them an additional $95,000 on South Street. On this particular job, they do have, they do have a contract to provide part-time oversight and we thought that that would be good enough. So that's why we, it failed twice and I don't know why it's back up, but it's back up. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Alzo.
I'd just like to bring up, I know it's a sore subject, but we had some overly qualified candidates on the position beneath the engineer. I know we've had conversation to maybe revisit that. But I, I don't know if we could appoint one of our overly qualified members on that list for an interim, for a dry run to see if these people can handle this position as an interim. This way here, you'd actually get to see the person in, in full action on, on that project. I, with, with Butch Jackson on board, I thought that maybe that would be an option. But that would be totally up to the manager. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Steves, then Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was the one vote who supported doing this project, having these people do it, do the oversight. And I still think it's necessary, especially considering we do not yet have the, the engineering assistant on, on board. And I actually think your idea there, Counsel Alzo, isn't a bad one, if we can figure out how to do it right. But I want to point out that the whole point of this individual is not to be looking at one project all the time. It's all of these other little things that are all over town that need to get done. So I think that having somebody watching this project, since it is such an important project, such an important street in our, in our community, it's got so many facets to it, including the school, that I want to say that I think we should have somebody there full-time. And the fact that Time Bond is already doing part-time work there as a, as an oversight, I think giving them the full-time makes sense. I, I would like to see this be the last time we do a, an external contractor doing full-time because I do want to get this, this other person onboard as soon as possible. And maybe what you were suggesting is the way to do it.
Also?
Yeah.
Very good. Counsel Ryan.
Actually, Counsel Steves answered my question. I was asking about the opposition and what their recommendation was. So thank you.
Very good. Counsel Alzo.
I think there's, like I call it a sore subject, this position was supposed to be a construction clerk of the works to oversee the roads because the problem that we had and what created the idea of creating this position was the terrible job that was being done because there was no oversight on the Main Street project and various other projects. And when it went to another committee and ended up being the assistant to the engineer and then all of a sudden it's all types of different errands he's going to do, but it was always basically under the control of the engineer. And it turned into a position that I would not support in, in, in that job description. So again, it's something that starts as a construction person and it ends up as an office person, running around doing errands for the management, which I think is totally wrong. It's not what we need. We need people, eyes and ears on the job, whether it be watching all the projects. Because when you have a clerk working for a community, there are some working in other communities that watch all the road jobs. The guy doesn't sit on West Street or South Street and say, I'm going to wait till they dig a hole. He's actually on the project in intervals where there is a hole dug to see a bottom inspection, an installation of a pipe, proper compaction, proper paving, proper temperatures. This is the job that we were supposed to create. DeJardin made it something else. So I think maybe we might have to go revisit that. But I thought it would have been a good opportunity to see the quality of the people on this list. But it doesn't seem to me that this keeps coming forward as they call overqualified. So for me, I will not be supporting this tonight. It's another waste of $100,000. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counseler Montigny, then Counselor Adams.
Thank you. Yeah, the $100,000, I can't imagine, maybe I'm wrong, that the position that previous speaker was talking about was going to be even that high for a yearly salary. I mean, it couldn't be much more than that if so. And with, to my understanding, the majority of West Street is getting done after the winter. I, I think we were waiting on some parts or something, if I recall properly. I, I have faith in the Town Manager to be able to hire that other position by then. So I'm going to be voting no on this too. Thank you.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'm not opposed to reevaluating this job and job description at later date, no problem whatsoever. So if the DPW would like to take that back on, I'd be in support of it and make sure we get it right the, the second time around, I guess. But as far as oversight, we complained about oversight. I've said this multiple times. We complain about lack of oversight. Look at the Main Street and all that kind of stuff. I, so, again, I voted in favor of this last time. We're voting in favor of again, that street's too important with the water, the sewer, the roads reconstruction, all that kind of stuff to be a part-time oversight, especially since we do not have an engineer on site right now. We do have a part-time one. That's it. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Four to three motion passes. Item number 12. Vote to contract with Lead Group Incorporated Doing Business as Lead Salt for the provision of treated salt for the bid price of $94.20 per ton to be funded from account number 001495-529000, Snow and Ice. Lead Salt is the lowest responsible and responsive bidder from Oxford Treated Salt Cooperative Fiscal Year 23 Treated Salt Bid. Authorize the Town Manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second. Counsel Mike Hedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This was approved at our Subcommittee by a four to zero vote.
Any discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 13. Vote to approve the purchase of an HP Design Jet T2600DR from CDW-G for $14,395.50 from state bid list, state bid list contract number ITC73, with funds from DPW, $4,395.50 from Small Capital Account Number 001499-583000. Water, $5,000 from maintenance and operating, account number 610450-520100. And sewer, $5,000 from maintenance and operating, account number 600440-520100.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Manager.
This is a piece of equipment that is down in DPW. Currently, the, the old piece, the CPU had died. I went down last week to visit with DPW after the departure of Mr. DeJardin. I met with Tara Tebow in the office. She showed me the particular piece. As it stands now, the older piece, which appears to be obsolete, it's a, it consists of three large pieces, a large CPU cabinet, a printer, and another piece. I did receive, and I think you all have received copies of it, a memo from Mr. DeJardin prior to his departure explaining why he felt it was necessary to get a new one. I'm told that they use it quite frequently when they're printing and drawing up plans. So he had felt that this was a need. They've been going out, going without it in recent weeks. So he had asked before he left if we could advance this. And that's about the extent of my knowledge on printers that print out these giant maps for plans. But I do my best to answer any questions that you may have.
Very good. Counsel Mike Hedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This, this one, I would have to object to this appearing on tonight's agenda only because this was brought to my attention five minutes before our DPW Subcommittee meeting. And I asked if, if this was an emergency. If not, then I'd like to see it go on our next DPW Subcommittee meeting. And I also sent an email of the same. I have a lot of questions about this purchase. I'm sure other members of the DPW Subcommittee has questions as well. So I would like to make a motion to refer this back to DPW Subcommittee for a further review. And I'd be looking for a second on that.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to send this back to committee. Counsel Alzo. Uh, Councilor Lozo.
Um, I'm not in favor of this at this point. Seems to me I've been fed the line, why don't we wait till the DPW director is in place before we do certain things? How do we know that this is the right piece of equipment that we need? Somebody going out the door is going to make a recommendation. Uh, I personally think if, if we're going to wait on, and hold off on certain things, maybe we should hold off on some expenditures until the new DPW head gets on, and then after we can purchase what he wants for his future department. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else speaking to the, refer it back to committee?
I have a question for the manager.
Certainly.
Okay. Um, if you can, if you can explain a little bit, how often does this device, the current device before it collapsed, get used down there? And can you kind of explain a little bit of what it's used for?
So my understanding is, when you see these large, like, two by three feet plans?
Yeah.
That's what this prints. It's a specialized printer for those large type of maps. And I'm told it's used quite regularly, because they have to print out copies and give them to the crew. That's all the information that was passed on to me when I went down to see.
Okay. That's the impression that I got. Okay. Um, I, as, I mean, Councilor Mike Hedy mentioned that DPW might have questions, and personally, I don't have that many questions with this one. Um, I have no problem with going forward with this.
Councilor Mike Hedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not trying to get any, you know, into any personalities here. It just seems to me it's not an emergency. And the memo says the printer went down earlier this year, so, and yet it was not on the capital improvement list for 2023. And, and there's other questions I have, I mean, about the need for the print. It sounds to me like the printer's working, but not the computer, so there's just a lot of questions that I have. Nothing against Mr. DeJardin, I'm not looking at it that way. I just would like, if something is going to bypass me, it's always been in the past, that the subcommittee chairman is consulted first. Is it all right if we bypass your committee? And then the subcommittee chairman says, yes, go ahead. No, I wasn't consulted on this, it just bypassed my committee. So that's all I want. I would just like to see it go through subcommittee, so we can have a further vetting on this piece of equipment. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
To that, I would just ask that we, it may not be on the next immediate subcommittee, to Councilor Lozo's point, get Mr. Jackson here. I can forward him the memo. Maybe he can shed some light, because I, I don't know that much about these printers and how frequently, and he may be able to tell you whether or not, you know, we could either get another piece, or if this is the right thing, so.
Councilor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Make a motion to, to postpone this to the October 17th Town Council meeting, to allow time for the DPW subcommittee to work its kinks out, and then bring it to the Town Council. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is a motion on the floor?
Yes, there is.
It's the same thing. It's not? All right.
He wants to refer.
Okay.
He wants to postpone. Refer has to be voted on first.
That's correct.
Sorry. My fault.
I'm sure, if I might, I'm sure it will come back to the October 17th meeting, so I don't think you have to worry about that. We'd, we'd like to discuss it, though.
We have a, we have a motion to refer to DPW subcommittee. Any further discussion on the motion to refer? Very good. All those in favor of referring?
I'm fine with either way.
Okay. Seven oh. Motion is referred to subcommittee.
Thank you.
Very welcome. Item number 14, vote to approve the transfer of the balance of funds from the sale of the Wells Building Real Estate Project Number 65220, sale of real estate, balance an account of $1,277,500 to the Capital Stabilization Fund Number 0842, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents. Second. Uh, Councilor Mike Hedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This was voted at the August 30th meeting, and it voted, the vote was five to nothing in favor. Thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 15, vote to approve the town clerk elections transfer request of $250 from account number 001162-512000, seasonal positions, to account number 001161-525100, R and M equipment, to replace the motherboards for three typewriters, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved. Second.
Uh, Mr. Manager.
Um, I've been advised from the finance department that this is to, for the repair and maintenance of several of our typewriters and the town clerks, and that there was money in the seasonal positions to cover it, and it needed to maintain the equipment we have currently. And that's all I have.
Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 16, amendments to stoppage bylaw by adding section 9-2.203.1, wetland protection and conservation, and vote to adopt said bylaw. First reading is tonight, 9/26/2022. We'll start with Councilor Steve's.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess. Um, let me adjust this, sir, so I can read it. Okay. Uh, 9-203.1, purpose. Um, the purpose of this bylaw is to protect the floodplains, wetlands, and related water resources, riverfront areas, and adjoining upland areas in the town of Southbridge by prior review and controlling activities deemed by the Southbridge Conservation Commission here and after the commission, likely to have a significant or cumulative effect on the wetland resource area, or, or resource area values, including, but not limited to the following: public or private water supply, groundwater, water quality, flood control, sedimentation and erosion control, storm damage prevention and flowage, water pollution control, wildlife and wildlife habitats, fisheries, shell fisheries, rare plant and animal species, agriculture, aquaculture, and recreation values deemed important to the community. Collectively, the resource area values protected by this bylaw. This bylaw is intended to utilize the home rule authority of the town of Southbridge so as to protect the resource areas under the Wetlands Protection Act, MGL Chapter 131, Section 40, here and after the act, as amended from time to time, to a greater degree to protect the, um, to, to protect the additional resource areas beyond the act recognized by the town as significant, to protect all resource areas for their additional values beyond those recognized in the act, and to impose, and in local regulations and permits, additional standards and procedures stricter than those of the act and regulations thereunder, 310 CMR 10, as amended from time to time. Subject, however, to the rights and benefits accorded to agricultural uses and structures of all kinds under the laws of the Commonwealth and other relevant bylaws of the town of Southbridge. Unless otherwise indicated in this bylaw and these regulations, definitions, timeframes, forms, and procedures shall be the same as those stated in the act. With required location, sorry, try that again. With required local commission identification, notification, and documentation, the commission and its agents, officers, and employees shall, with 24 hours' notice to the property owner, except in the event of an emergency, have authority to enter upon privately owned land for the purpose of performing their duties under this bylaw, and may make or cause to be made such examinations, surveys, or sampling as the commission deems necessary. Subject to the constitutions and laws of the United States and the Commonwealth, so long as property owner consents to the entry, or an administrative search warrant is issued by a court. See Mass General Law Chapter 131, Section 40, as amended. Section 9-203.2, jurisdiction. Except as permitted by the commission, or as otherwise provided in this bylaw, no person shall commence to remove, fill, dredge, degrade, discharge, and to alter or build upon the following resource areas: freshlin, freshwa, try that again, freshwater wetlands, marshes, wet meadows, bogs, swamps, vernal pools, banks, reservoirs, lakes, ponds of any size, lands underwater bodies, land subject to flooding or inundation by groundwater or surface water, any land bordering thereon. Bordering in this context shall mean either, either the greater or of the following: A, 100 feet horizontally perpendicular to the bank of any freshwater wetland, marsh, wet meadow, bog, swamp, vernal pool, inclusive of uncertified vernal pools, bank, reservoir, lake, and pond; B, 100 feet horizontally perpendicular to the water elevation of the hundred-year storm; C, 200 feet horizontally perpendicular to the mean annual high-water elevation of any stream, perennial, or intermittent, or river. In addition, it is the policy of the commission to advise applicants on these non-regulated wetland resource areas; D, intermittent streams upgrading of wetland resource areas; E, isolated land subject to flooding below 310 CMR 10.57 size thresholds; and F, isolated wetlands less than 5,000 square feet. The commission will make every effort to identify these areas at the site, will recommend locating them on the plans, will encourage applicants to avoid impacts to these areas, and will suggest possible measures to mitigate unavoidable impacts with respect to drainage and flood control. The jurisdiction of this bylaw shall not extend to uses and structures of agriculture that enjoy the rights and privileges of laws and regulations of the Commonwealth governing agriculture, including work performed for normal maintenance or improvement of land and in agricultural or agro, agricultural or aquacultural uses, as identified by 310 CMR 10.04. 9-203.2A, vernal pools. Vernal pools certified by the state shall be considered a resource area. It is the policy of the commission to protect vernal pools, because they provide valuable and increasingly rare wildlife habitat, because they do not contain water all seasons of the year. A vernal pool must be identified in order to be protected. This can be done at the responsibility of the property owner or developer, as part of the determination of applicability, or part of the notice of intent review, or prior to these processes by a qualified person. The commission must be satisfied that the person identifying a vernal pool is qualified to do so. 9-203.2B, rare species. Where the project site warrants, the applicant may be required to submit a quantitative habitat analysis. In areas under the jurisdiction of the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program, the applicant must obtain a written decision from the National Heritage and Endangered Species Program, indicating the presence or absence of protected or endangered species. 9-203.3, conditional exceptions. The order of conditions and application required by this bylaw shall not be required for maintaining, repairing, or replacing, but not substantially changing or enlarging an existing and lawfully located structure or facility used in the service of the public or to provide electric, gas, water, sewer, telephone, and other telecommunications services, provided that written notice has been given to the commission prior to the commencement of any such work, and provided that the work conforms to the performance standards and design specifications in regulations adopted by the commission. 9-203.3A, agricultural work. Any agricultural activity as defined by the Farm Assessment Act, MGL Chapter 61A, to be normal maintenance or improvement of land in agricultural use, and therefore exempt from the provisions of this act, MGL Chapter 128, Section 1A, and from the Wetlands Protection Regulations of 310 CMR 10, will also be exempt under this bylaw. Additionally, any agricultural activity as defined by MGL Chapter 61A, and on land not under this jurisdiction of the act and 310 CMR 10, will be exempt from all local jurisdiction. However, no animals shall be given free access to any wetland vernal pool, certified or not, isolated land subject to flooding, marsh, swab, swamp, bog, et cetera, intermittent or perennial stream, and they must be kept far enough away or below, far, sorry, far enough from or below the level of aforementioned wetlands, so that their waste does not impact said wetlands. The application and order of conditions required by this bylaw shall not be required for work performed under, for normal maintenance or improvement of land. 9-203.3B, emergency work. The application and permit required by this bylaw shall not be required for emergency projects necessary for the protection of the health and, health and safety of the public, provided that the work is to be performed by, or has been ordered, ordered to be performed by an agency of the Commonwealth, or a political subdivision thereof, provided that written advance notice has been given to the commission prior to commencement of work, or within 24 hours after commencement, provided that the commission or its agent certifies the work as an emergency project, provided that the work is performed only for the time and place certified by the commission, with limited purposes necessary to abate the emergency, and provided that within 21 days of commitments, commencement of emergency projects, a permit application shall be filed with the commission for review. Upon failure to meet these and other requirements of the commission, the commission may, after notice and public hearing, revoke or modify any emergency project approval and order restoration, order restoration and mitigation matters. 9-203.3C, waivers. Strict compliance with this bylaw may be waived when, in the judgment of the commission, such action is in the public interest and is consistent with the intent and purpose of the bylaw. Any request for a waiver must be, must be submitted to the commission in writing, stating why a waiver is desired or needed, is in the public and, public benefit, and is consistent with the intent and purpose of the Wetlands Protection Act and this bylaw. All waiver requests must be, shall be presented at the time of filing.
You all set?
Um, if you want me to continue?
It's up to you.
I mean, it seems like a good place to break, so.
Okay. Councilor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you.
9-203.1.
Yep. 9-203.4 filing requirements and procedures. 9-203.4A permits. Written applications shall be filed with the Conservation Commission to perform activities affecting resource areas protected by this bylaw. The permanent application shall include such information and plans as are deemed necessary by the commission to describe proposed activities and their effects on the resource area protected by this bylaw. No activities shall commence without receiving and complying with a permit issued pursuant to the bylaw, except as certified to be an emergency under section 9-203.3B above. 9-203.4B, determinations. Any person desiring to know whether or not a proposed activity or an area is subject to this bylaw may, in writing, request a determination from the commission on the appropriate form. The request shall contain all necessary information, plans, data calculations, et cetera, as specified by the regulations. The commission is in appropriate, is in appropriate case, the commission is, in an appropriate case, may accept, as the application and plans under this bylaw, any application and plans filed under the act and 310 CMR 10. But the commission is not obliged to do so. At the time of the permit application, the applicant shall pay a filing fee according to the schedule in the associated Southbridge Wetlands Protection and Conservation Bylaw rules and regulations. This fee is not refundable. The fee is in addition to the, is in addition to the, that we quite, to the, that required by the act, 310 CMR 10. 9-203.5, notice of hearings. The applicant filing a request for determination or application for permit under the provisions of this bylaw shall give written notice with proof of mailing or by hand delivery to all the abudits within 100 feet of the property lines of the property in which the project is to occur, according to the current assessor's records, five days in advance of the scheduled hearing, in accordance with provisions of this bylaw and its regulations. The commission is responsible for notifying the applicant and owner, if not the same, of the time, place, and place of the scheduled hearing. Also, the commission is responsible for placing a notification of the subject, of, of the subject hearing in a local newspaper at least five days prior to the hearing. The commission shall conduct a public hearing within 21 days of the receipt of the completed application for permit or request for determination, unless unusual circumstances prevent this scheduling. Under such circumstances, the hearing shall be scheduled at the next regularly scheduled commission meeting. Commission meeting, having the time available. The Commission may, at its option, combine the hearing under this bylaw and the hearing conducted under the Act. The Commission shall have the authority to continue the hearing to a specific date agreeable to the applicant, announced at the hearing without further notification for reasons stated at the hearing. Those reasons may include, but are not limited to, requests from other boards, officials, or attendees. In the event that the applicant, applicant objects to a continuance, the hearing shall be closed and the Commission will take action on available information. 9-203.6 Notification to Other Town Officials, Boards, and Commissions. At the same time, it advertises the public hearing, the Commission shall notify the Department of Public Works, Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, Board of Health, Building Inspector, and any other relevant municipal body regarding the application before the Commission. The Commission shall not take final action until such boards and officials have had seven days from receipt of the notice to file written comments and recommendations with the Commission. The Commission shall take into account any comments or recommendations, but they shall not be binding on the Commission. The applicant shall have the right to receive any such comments and recommendations and to respond to them at the public hearing prior to final action. 9-203.7 Public Hearings, Permits, and Conditions. If the Commission, after a public hearing, determines that the activities which are the subject of the application are likely to have a significant or cumulative effect upon the wetland values protected by this bylaw, the Commission, within 21 days at the close of the hearing, unless unusual circumstances prevent it, shall issue or deny a permit for activities requested. Determinations of applicability will be issued within 21 days of receipt of the request. If the Commission issues a permit, conditions shall be imposed which are deemed necessary to protect the interests and values, and all activities shall be performed in accordance with those conditions. The Commission is empowered to deny a permit for failure to meet the requirements of this bylaw, for failure to submit necessary information and plans requested by the Commission, for failure to avoid or prevent unacceptable significant or cumulative effects, to avoid or prevent unacceptable significant or cumulative effects upon the wetland values protected by this bylaw, and where no conditions are accurate to protect those values. A permit shall expire three years from the date of issuance. The Commission may issue a permit expiring five years from the date of issuance for reoccurring or continuous maintenance work, provided that annual notification of time and location of work is given to the Commission. Any permit may be renewed once for an additional one-year period, provided that the request for renewal is received in writing by the Commission 30 days prior to expiration. The Commission, for good cause, may revoke or modify a permit issued under this bylaw after notice to the holder of the permit, notice to the public, abudits, and town boards pursuant to the preceding Section 9-203.5 in a public hearing. The Conservation Commission is in appropriate case, in an appropriate case, may combine the permit and other action on an application issued under this bylaw with the Order of Conditions issued under the Act. The Commission may deny the request for an extension and require the filing of a new permit request under the following circumstances. One, no work has begun on the project except where such failure is due to delays caused by events or processes outside the applicant's control that are clearly identified in the extension request. And two, new information has become available indicating that the order is not adequate to protect the interests covered by this bylaw. No work proposed in any permit application shall be undertaken until the permit issued by the Commission with respect to such work has been recorded in the Registry of Deeds or if the land affected thereby be registered land in the Registry section of the Land Court for the district wherein the land lies, and until the holder of the permit certifies in writing to the Commission that the permit has been recorded.
All set?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor McHedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 9-203.8 Violations and Enforcement. No person shall remove, fill, dredge, build upon, degrade, or otherwise alter protected resource areas or cause suffer or allow such activity or leave in place unauthorized fill or otherwise fail to restore illegally altered land to its original condition or fail to comply with a permit or an enforcement order issued. 9-203.8A Identification of Violations. Violations can be identified by observations of the Conservation Commissioners and or its agents, wetland consultants, and citizens. Reports of violations are always confidential. Commissioners and staff may not reveal the source of any report of possible violations. When potential violations are reported, a commissioner, the commission's agent, or a wetland consultant will determine whether a violation exists and if an enforcement order is necessary. A wetland consultant may consult with commission's agent and commissioners as necessary, but if time or other constraints exist, may proceed employing best judgment. A temporary enforcement order or temporary cease and desist order may be imposed by an individual commission member, wetland consultant, or the commission's agent, but all such temporary orders must be ratified by a majority of the commission at a public meeting within 21 days and may be extended at such time for any period the commission deems necessary. 9-203.8B Violations. If a commissioner, the commission's agent, or wetland consultant confirms or strongly suspects a violation, an enforcement order will be issued. Enforcement orders will direct the property owners and contractors to one-stop work, two, identify resource areas on the site, three, install erosion and/or sedimentation controls, and four, meet the commission to discuss the violation. Two, if a wetland line has been previously approved by the commission, its location will be basis for evaluation of the violation. If a wetland line has not been established or approved by the commission, then the commission or enforcement order may require the owner, developer, and contractor to employ a wetland scientist at the applicant's expense to identify wetland resource areas with flagging within a timeframe not longer than two weeks from the date of the enforcement order. All enforcement orders will be maintained in the conservation database and placed on file. At the subsequent meeting, the commission will consider the following aspects of the violation. A, value of the area to the statutory interests. B, harm or the damage. C, immediacy of the harm. D, value of restoration. E, feasibility of restoration. F, potential legal outcomes. G, potential financial burden to the town of Southbridge. Three, the commission shall have authority and force its regulations and permits by the issuance of enforcement orders, administrative orders, and initiation of civil and criminal court actions. Any person who violates the provision may be ordered to restore the property to its original condition and take other action deemed necessary to remedy such violations, fined, or both. The enforcement officer in the non-criminal disposition procedure shall be members of the Conservation Commission or its agents. Four, upon request of the commission, the town manager and the town attorney shall take legal action for enforcement under civil law. Upon request of the commission, the chief of police shall take legal action for enforcement under criminal law. Five, municipal boards and officers, including any police officer or any or other officer having police powers, shall have authority to assist the commission in enforcement. As an alternative to criminal prosecution in a specific case, the commission shall issue citations of the non-criminal disposition procedures set forth in Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 21D. And six, in addition to any other remedies available under any bylaw, under any law or this bylaw, any person who violates any provision of this bylaw, regulation, permit, or administrative order issued may be fined according to the fine scheduled below. A, the fine for filling in a wetland resource area is $5 per square foot or filled-in resource area per day. Each day or portion thereof during such a violation continues or unauthorized fill or other alteration remains in place shall constitute a separate offense. Also, each provision of the bylaw, regulation, permits, or administrative orders violating shall constitute a separate offense. For example, if unauthorized fill of a wetland amounts to 100 square feet, the commission or its agents has the right to issue a penalty of $500 for each day unauthorized fill remains in the wetland or resource area. B, for all other violations, each day a portion thereof during which a violation continues shall constitute a separate offense, and each provision of the bylaw, regulations, permits, or administrative orders violated shall constitute a separate offense. Seven, pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 21D, and the Town of Southbridge General Bylaw, Section 1-111, the commission or its agent may issue the following penalties for wetland violations, in addition to the fine for filling of wetlands after initial notification by the Southbridge Conservation Commission or its agents. A, first offense, $100 for each day the violation exists. B, second offense, $550 for each day the violation exists. C, third offense, and all subsequent offenses, $200 for each day the violation exists. Fines assessed under this bylaw shall be separate from and in addition to any applicable under the Act. 9-203-9 Construction Standards and Restrictions. 9-203-9A Sequence of Construction. The applicant shall provide a detailed sequence of construction to the commission as part of the standard filing requirements detailing in what order the project's construction will follow. Said sequence shall be followed by the applicant unless amended and approved by the commission. 9-203.9B Wetland Setbacks for New Activities. In order to protect and preserve the public interest and values of the wetlands and waterways of the Town of Southbridge, activities in wetland and buffer zone resource areas should be avoided to the full extent practicable. The following are the minimum distance setbacks of activities from the edge of wetlands or vernal pool as per Section 9-203.2A. These setbacks are the minimum and may be extended further if deemed necessary for the protection of the interests of the bylaw, of the bylaw by the commission. These setbacks may be reduced if the applicant successfully demonstrates to the commission that there are no adverse impacts, along with a site inspection by the commission. The setbacks shall be as follows. A, zero-foot setback for wetland-dependent structures, drain, outfalls, wears, et cetera. Fences and culverts or bridges necessary for wet-upland access or reasonably alternative access is unavailable. B, 25-foot setback for undisturbed natural vegetation. C, 50-foot no-build setback to the edge of driveways, roadways, and structures. D, 25-foot chemical-free area within two, which no fertilizers, herbicides, pesticides, or other chemical maintenance substances shall be used. E, 100-foot setback for underground or above-ground storage of gasoline, oil, or other fuels and hazardous materials. F, 100-foot setback of undisturbed natural vegetation to the mean high-water line for vernal pools, certified or not, where applicable. Somebody want to take over?
Sure. Counselor Montigny.
Okay. We're at 9-203.9C?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Erosion Prevention. Proposed location of all silt and erosion prevention devices such as silt fence, cure logs, and hay bale shall be shown on the plan submitted in the wetland filing furnished by the applicant for commission review and approval. These devices shall be installed prior to the commencement of activities on the site and maintained until landscaping is established and inspected by the commission or its agent. 9-203.9D Storage of Fill. If any fill is to be stored on-site, it shall be stored outside of the buffer zone and covered by an impenetrable barrier, tarpaulin. The location of said fill shall appear on any plan submitted to the commission with the notice of intent. If the commission determines that the proposed location of fill threatens the areas subject to protection, it may require the applicant to store said fill in a different location or to remove it completely from the site. 9-203.9E Construction Debris or Spoils Area. There shall be no disposal or burial of construction debris, i.e. scrap lumber, metals, concrete, asphalt, piping, logs, stumps, et cetera, within 100 feet of a wetland. Illegal disposal of said debris shall result in a stop-work order, fine, required removal of said debris, or all of the above. The commission may allow the creation of a spoils area which would be required to be designated on the project plan if it is proven that it will not harm areas subject to protection. This spoils area must be protected from the elements as if it were fill as above. 9-203.9F Wetlands Replication and Requirements. One, it is the policy of the Commission to follow the No Net Loss Guidelines set forth by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Therefore, applicants who propose to alter resource areas under the commission's jurisdiction must demonstrate that there is no practicable alternative, minimize impacts where they are unavoidable, and mitigate losses of wetland resource area where applicable or appropriate on a 1 to 1.5 basis. Limited projects are included in this requirement. The 1.1.5 ratio may be reduced to 1.1 if the applicant successfully demonstrates to the commission that the site will not support a 1 to 1.5 ratio due to the area of the site, slope, soil type, or other natural feature which would adversely affect the created wetland resource area. Projects involving wetlands filing and/or permanent alterations shall meet the requirements of 310 CMR 10.63 and 10.554 and the following requirements of the commission. A, the proposed replication area design must be submitted to the commission for approval as part of the submittal of the project notice of intent. Applicants are advised to appear before commission for preliminary discussion, comments, and review prior to submittal of the replication plan with the notice of intent. B, the replication area must be shown to sufficiently duplicate the functions of the wetland proposed to be altered. C, the replication area shall be constructed to the extent possible immediately after alteration of the existing wetland and during the same growing season. D, the proposed replication area must be clearly flagged for commission site inspection before the notice of intent filing shall be considered complete, and said flagging shall correspond to flagging shown on the plans. E, the notice of intent submittal for a replication area shall include a detail of replication showing. I, cross-section with the indication of groundwater level, soil profile, and thickness of organic soil in the existing and proposed wetlands. II, plant species, plant species detail, including species found in the area to be altered, and number, types and locations of species to be introduced into the replication area which shall be native wetland species. III, detail the stabilization plans for replication area banks and IV, wildlife habitat diversity plan. F, construction of the replication area shall follow all requirements as set forth by the commission. Three, if any, if after three growing seasons, the commission determines that the replication area has not satisfactorily developed into a wetland, the applicant or owner may be required to submit new plans to successfully replace the wetland. No certificate of compliance shall be issued until the commission has determined that a satisfactory replication area has been completed at the end of the three-year period. 9-203.10 Surety. As part of a permit issued under this bylaw, in addition to any surety required by any other municipal or state board, agency, or official, the commission may require that the performance and observance of the conditions imposed thereunder, including conditions requiring mitigation work, be secured wholly or in part by one or both of the methods described below. One, by a proper bond, deposit of money, or negotiable securities under a written third-party escrow arrangement, or other undertaking of financial responsibility sufficient in the opinion of the commission to be released in whole or in part upon issuance of certificate of compliance for work performed pursuant to the permit. Said bond or other surety shall be payable to the Town of Southbridge sufficient as to secure the faithful and satisfactory performance of work required by the final order of conditions in such sum and upon such conditions as the commission may require. Notwithstanding the above, the amount of such bond shall not exceed either the estimated cost of the work required by the final order of conditions or the estimated cost of the work required for the restoration of affected lands and properties if the work is not performed as required, whichever is greater, but may include a sum to account for reasonably projected inflation if the project will last more than one year, including replication time. 9-203.11 Appeals. A decision of the commission shall be reviewable in the Superior Court in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 243, Section 4. 9-203.12 Relation to the Wetlands Protection Act. This bylaw is adopted under the Home Rule Amendment of the Massachusetts Constitution and the Home Rule Statutes, independent of the Wetlands Protection Act, MGL Chapter 131, Section 40, as amended, and Regulations 310 CMR 10.00 as amended thereunder. It is the intention of this bylaw that the purposes, jurisdiction, authority, exemptions, regulations, specifications... regulations, specifications, standards, and other requirements shall be interpreted and administered as stricter than those under the Wetlands Protection Act and regulations. Nine dash two oh three point thirteen, Severe Ability. If any provision of this bylaw is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, such holding shall not affect the validity of the remainder of this bylaw nor shall it invalidate any order of conditions or determination which previously has been issued. Nine dash two oh three point fourteen, Regulations. After public notice and public hearing, the commission shall promulgate rules and regulations to effect the purposes of this bylaw. Failure by the commission to promulgate such rules and regulations or illegal declaration of the invalidity of such regulations by a court of law shall not act to suspend or invalidate the effect of this bylaw. Two, the Southbridge Conservation Commission may, from time to time, adopt such other and further definitions, regulations, fees, and performance standards as it may deem necessary to protect the interests and/or intent of this bylaw. Said definitions, regulations, fees, and performance standards shall become effective upon publication following a public hearing advertised as per state law. Three, at a minimum, these regulations shall define key terms in this bylaw and establish basic performance standards not inconsistent with the bylaw and procedures governing the amount and filing of fees. Nine dash two oh three fifteen, Definitions. The following definitions shall apply in the interpretation and the implementation of this bylaw. Nine dash two oh three point fifteen A, Alter shall include without limitation the following activities when undertaken to, upon, within, or affecting resource areas protected by this bylaw. One, removal, excavation, or dredging of soil, sand, gravel, or aggregate materials of any kind. Two, change of pre-existing drainage characteristics, flushing characteristics, salinity distribution, sedimentation patterns, flow patterns, or flood retention characteristics. Three, drainage or other disturbance of water level or water table. Four, dumping, discharging, or filing, filling with any material which may degrade water quality. Five, placing of fill or removal of material which would alter elevations. Six, driving of piles, erection or repair of buildings or structures of any kind. Seven, placing of extrusions on objects and water. Eight, destruction of plant life, including cutting of trees. Nine, changing temperature, biochemical oxygen demand, or other physical, biological, or chemical characteristics of any waters. Ten, any activities, changes, or work which may cause or tend to contribute to pollution of any body of water or groundwater. Eleven, incremental activities which have or may have a cumulative adverse impact on the resource areas protected by this bylaw. Nine dash two oh three fifteen B, Abutter. Is a landowner as determined by the most recent assessor's records whose land immediately abuts the property which is the subject of notification, or whose land lies across a public or private traveled way, or across any river, stream, pond, or lake, or downstream to a distance of one hundred feet. In particular cases, the Southbridge Conservation Commission can add persons to the list of abutters to be notified. Nine dash two oh three fifteen C, Intermittent Stream is a body of running water that does not flow year-round. It may flow in all seasons except during the driest summer months, or only after precipitation, or when groundwater levels or water from snow melt are high. There may be little or no vegetation on the rocks, and the only invertebrates that may be species that can tolerate periods of drought. An intermittent stream shall be delineated by a defined permanent channel and bank and the occurrence of two or more of the following characteristics. A, evidence of scour or deposits of recent alluvium or detritus. B, the presence of standing or flowing water for a duration longer than a particular storm incident. C, the presence of hydrophytic vegetation and/or D, the presence of hydric soils. Nine dash two oh three fifteen D, Persons shall include any individual, group of individuals, association, partnership, corporation, company, business organization, trust, estate, the Commonwealth, or political subdivision thereof, to the extent subject to town bylaws, administrative agency, public or quasi-public corporation or body, this municipality, and any other legal entity its legal representatives, agents, or assigns. Nine dash two oh three fifteen E, Rare Species shall include those invertebrate and invertebrate animal species officially listed, endangered, threatened, or of special concern by the Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife under three-two-one CMR eight, as amended, as well as those plant species listed as rare, threatened, or endangered by the Massachusetts Natural Heritage Program regardless of whether the site in which they occur has been previously identified. Nine dash two oh three fifteen F, Stream includes any body of running water moving in a channel in the ground, including intermittent streams, perennial streams, rivers, and headwaters of streams above the point where there are wetlands adjoining them. Nine two oh three point fifteen G, Vernal Pool is a confined basin depression which contains a small body of standing water usually drying out for part of the year during warm weather, as well as the area within a hundred feet of the mean annual boundary of such a depression to the extent that such habitat is within an area subject to protection under MGL Chapter One Thirty-One, Section Forty, as specified in three-ten CMR Ten Point O-two I, as amended. It can be natural or man-made, and usually lacks a permanent outlet or any fish population. Further, the occurrence of one or more obligate species, including the fairy shrimp, spotted salamander, Jefferson salamander, marbled salamander, wood frog, and/or eastern spade-footed toad, is necessary to conclusively define the vernal pool. These areas are essentially breeding habitat and provide other extremely important wildlife habitat functions during non-breeding season as well, for a variety of amphibian species such as wood frog and the spotted salamander, and are important habitat for other wildlife species. Nine dash two oh three fifteen H, Wetlands under this bylaw includes wet meadows, marshes, bogs, and swamps of all kinds, regardless of whether they border on surface waters as defined in MGL Chapter One Thirty-One, Section Forty, as amended. Except as otherwise provided in this bylaw or in regulations of the commission, the definitions and terms in this bylaw shall be set forth in the Wetlands Protection Act, MGL Chapter One Thirty-One, Section Forty, and Regulations Three-Ten CMR Ten. And Mr. Chair, at the next meeting, if it is allowed, I will ask for a vote to waive the second reading, but thank you very much for having us do this tonight.
Counselor Marketti.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, it's, according to the charter, they have to be read, but I don't see why we couldn't take this reading tonight and play it at the next meeting, rather than us go through this again. We've already read it once. We just, it's recorded, so play it at the next meeting. That's what I would. I, yeah, I could speed it up a little bit.
Okay, we'll check upon that.
All right? And I can do that if you want, or they could do it. I'm sure they could do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know it's, uh, almost, almost eleven and a half pages. It's a long bylaw, but we did follow the charter, which is what's important. It's also an important bylaw. Thank you all to the councils who all shipped in and did a marvelous job reading, so thank you all. Uh, Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Vote to Go Into Executive Session. A, Pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One Three, To Discuss Strategy.
Can I just say something about the bylaw before you go on to the next?
Certainly.
Just quick, I just wanted to point out that this law does exist in the state of Massachusetts under the Mass. uh, SGL, Chapter One Thirty-One. What this would allow us to do is Southbridge would receive the fines, um, and I think that's a very important distinction. It already exists, um, and we just go through DEP, um, but this way we could do it locally.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Item Seventeen, Vote to Enter Into Executive Session, Pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One Three, To Discuss Strategy With Respect to Collective Bargaining Regarding All Collective Bargaining Units, Which Have Discussed in an Open Meeting May Have a Detrimental Effect on the Bargaining Position of the Public Body, and Pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter Thirty-Nine, Section Twenty-Three-B, To Review Executive Session Minutes and Take Any Action There Too. Council will return to open session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Lozlo.
Yes.
Counselor Montigny.
Yes.
Counselor Marketti.
Yes.
Counselor Re, I'm sorry, Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Counselor Steves.
Yep.
Counselor Adams, yes.
Seven oh. We're going to executive session. We will return. I call the open session back to order. We're continuing now with the agenda. Item Number Eighteen, Vote to Ratify the Collective Bargaining Agreement Between the Town of Southbridge and Mass. COP Local Four-Seven-Eight, Southbridge Dispatch Union, Effective July First, Two Thousand Twenty-Two, through June Thirty, Two Thousand Twenty-Five, and Allow the Town Manager to Sign All Related Documents.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Manager.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, again, members of the council. This, as you know from our executive session, is a brand-new contract. Um, the dispatchers are a brand-new union here in town. This is a three-year agreement, basically codifies all the existing working conditions they had under the non-union, um, personnel bylaws. However, what this really addressed was some of the, um, competitive wages that we see in some of the other communities, and I want to thank Ms. Fermanek, who's the president of the local dispatch, and her team, Chief of Police Shane Woodson, as well as Ms. Adriana Rubena, who's our Assistant Town Manager, HR. Together, we were able to work without any real involvement from outside council to come up with a, an amicable agreement which I think is in the best interest of all parties.
Very good.
Roll call, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Steves.
Yeah, I have a quick question. Um, as far as funding it, do we need to, do we need to do anything, um, for extra funding, or is it already in the budget?
I see the chief coming to the podium right here. Because I noticed we don't have an agenda item.
Good evening again, uh, Mr. Chair, through you. We should be, uh, able to just move money from our salary account because we're short police staff right now, and it comes out of the same salary account, so at this point, I think we're safe to move on without doing any appropriations.
Okay.
I'm gonna call a five-minute recess. Uh, roll call vote.
Counselor Lozlo.
Yes.
Counselor Montigny.
Yes.
Counselor Marketti.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Counselor Steves.
Yes.
Counselor Adams, yes. Counselor Daniel.
Yes. Seven yes. Roll call. The motion passes. We have a contract.
Congratulations.
Oh, I got a cough drop stuck in my throat. I'm, Lozlo did, but me is the second.
Okay. Very good. Um, Agenda Item Number Nineteen, Vote to Release the Executive Session Minutes of June Twenty-Fifth, Two Thousand Eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item Number Twenty, Vote to Release the Executive Session Minutes of May Tenth, Two Thousand Twenty-One, With Read Actions.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item Number Twenty-One, Vote to Release the Executive Session Minutes of June Seventh, Two Thousand Twenty-One.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item Number Twenty-Two, Counselors' Form. Uh, Counselor Marketti.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did attend the Board of Health meeting a couple weeks ago, and they voted to apply for the Mass. DEP's technical assistant grant so the town can have someone here to discuss the pay-as-you-throw program for curbside trash pickup. I did communicate with Irene Congdon, Mass. DEP's Municipal Assistant Coordinator. She said she discussed this with Anna Smith, and Ms. Smith confirmed the Board of Health's approval and said this had to go through the council committee, so I would ask that Counselor Ryan, if she could please schedule this for her next EHS committee, subcommittee, if she hasn't already done so, I'd appreciate it. Uh, I did attend the Autumn Fest Two Thousand Twenty-Two, and it was, uh, I really had a great time. There was good music, good food, good, good beer, lots of booths and family fun. As far as I can tell, everybody was having a pretty good time. Uh, I'd like to congratulate the Southbridge-Donton Partnership, Cultural Council, and all the sponsors, and those who helped make Autumn Fest Two Thousand Twenty-Two a success. And finally, I'd like to announce that today is Day Two Hundred and Ten since the Town Council voted to replace the carpets in the town hall, and just so you are all aware, as of today, the carpets have still not been replaced in the town hall, so thank you.
Very good. Counselor Montigny.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to wish a happy birthday to my father today, and congratulations on his marriage this weekend to his girlfriend of the last five years. It was at Fins and Tails. They did a great job on the event. I'd like to extend my thanks to the town manager for taking care of several citizen concerns I brought to him last week. He corrected these matters very, very quickly, and to piggyback off that, I'm very excited to learn tonight from Counselor Adams earlier tonight that the town manager was able to meet with Amazon. Um, I first suggested the idea to the town manager when I had my introductory meeting with him on August Tenth in his office, and I mentioned how, how badly I wish we had a piece of, uh, you know, the pie here when it comes to Amazon coming to the area, um, you know, I, I had always floated the idea that it would be great for them to be able to use the airport, or purchase the airport, anything in between. So for, for me to hear that tonight, you know, it's an idea that many of my constituents and I created and have discussed together at length during election campaign season, so, you know, as a rookie counselor, it's great to feel this and see this come to, you know, fruition, something that you've created in your head with your constituents. I can't wait for the next meeting. We gotta keep them on the line, um, because, you know, can you imagine having Amazon as a Southbridge taxpayer? I don't think it can get any better than that. Also, after Hurricane Fiona did quite a number on the Caribbean, it hit really hard in Puerto Rico, and I personally have a, a lot of people that I know and care about there, and my godson's family, and friends that I met over the last few years spending time there, and I think we should all keep them in our prayers. Um, where I was didn't get as affected as much, but I do have, um, very close friends where their family lost everything, um, so we just need to keep them in our prayers, and if you're considering doing any donations to anything before the end of the year, I know some people do that, please consider that. Um, when it comes to the Autumn Fest event from the seventeenth of September, it was just simply fantastic. I saw so many people from town, and I actually also saw a lot of people from out of town, which is great that we were able to attract, um, other communities here. I saw just about every counselor, subcommittee members, town employees, um, and the band that I was able to catch towards the end of the night was, was great. I got to catch a few songs with the town manager who made his way down on Saturday too, which was, which was wonderful. And I'm trying to find places and things in Southbridge that I've never seen or heard of before, so while I was waiting for a sandwich at Pizza Chef the other day, I looked upstairs, and there's this nice little store called Kathy's Treasures Thrift Shop, and, you know, there's a lot of cool things, and I love thrift shops, but anyone that still sells Nintendo and Atari games is always worth mentioning. Um, and it's also a Latin business, so it goes to show you how important Ms. Cruz's presentation was earlier this evening about the Latin American Business Organization. Um, we have a lot of cool stuff going out in town. And lastly, to my good friend Counselor Dow, if you're out there watching, I miss you very much, and I can't wait to see you at the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Lozlo.
I have nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Counselor Steves.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a couple of quick things. I just wanted to point out that the, uh, the Marcos Rios Golf Tournament is going to be on Friday, thirtieth, this weekend, um, for, to honor Marcos and his connections in town, so many people already know about that. Um, also on Saturday, there's several things going on. One is the electronic take-back here, um, and then the Dudley Grange is doing their Apple Fest, which is gonna be up on Dudley Hill, um, next to Nichols College, and so if you have any interest in apples, you can go up there and do that, and a bunch of other stuff. And I also want to mention on Saturday, the eighth, here in town, we're doing, as I think the manager, uh, John mentioned earlier, the Bootify Southbridge Fall Town Cleanup is going on on Saturday, uh, the eighth, from eight-thirty to twelve, and that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, the manager talked about this earlier, so I'll be brief on this point. Um, we had a Worcester Regional Transit Authority meeting on Thursday. Um, as a member, I was proud to vote to continue the, um, the fare-free program through June thirtieth, Two Thousand Twenty-Three, the end of the fiscal year, um, which is a more appropriate action anyway, because we'll be having the opportunity now during our normal budget cycle to really have these discussions about where we're gonna find funding, where we're gonna secure, um, sources, et cetera, and what plans we may, as an RTA, want to implement, um, whether or not we continue or don't continue with fare-free past June thirtieth. But during this time, it's gonna prove very valuable, as it has already continued to prove. Um, I'm looking forward to continuing to advocate for fare-free busing here in Southbridge. It's worked, and I'm looking forward to working continuously with the manager and other groups to make sure that this service stays here in town. Um, one thing that, uh, came up during the meeting that, uh, got a number of us concerned that I wanted to be forthright and transparent and bring it back to the full board, was that the union contracts that were, um, the increases that were approved, um, are not coming out of the normal operating budget. Now, some of us Now, to some of us, that's very concerning. Um, it's, it's something that we shouldn't be using one-time funds for to operate. Um, union increases, that should be coming directly out of the budget. Um, I just want to let everybody know that it is on our, all our radars, and that we're prepared during budget season to make sure that those are properly inputted into the budget, at least for some of us, um, and not using one-time funds into the budget. It's bad fiscal practice. It's bad, it was bad fiscal practice when it was done here in Southbridge under a former manager. It's bad fiscal practice, no matter who, whoever does it. So, I want to make sure that people know that I'm, I'm keeping an eye on that, and I'm keeping an eye on making sure that their tax dollars are used appropriately, um, in financially, in a financially responsible way. Um, and that's it. That's all I have to say this evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, Vice Chair Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just wanted to thank the Marine Corps Color Guard that came over all the way from west over to the, uh, morning colors, uh, for Autumn Fest. It was, uh, exciting to see they've done it three years in a row for us, so we really appreciate them coming all the way over to do that. Also, uh, Counselor Montigny, uh, had mentioned about, uh, Puerto Rico. There's a meeting we're having, a few of us are having, on, uh, Wednesday at twelve o'clock, uh, discussing, um, just anticipation of any, any children that may be coming our way, or any families that may be coming our way up here to Worcester through, uh, Southbridge.